Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting today, we have a few presentations of honorary resolutions. And we are pleased to welcome our guests in the space as we present these and taking up on our agenda. With that, I'm inviting Councilmember Jenkins to join me and anybody from NBN who wants to come join us for our honorary resolution for Black History Month can step right up. All right, thank you all for joining us. This resolution is recognizing January 2024 as—oh, this is the wrong one. Let me borrow this one. This resolution is honoring February 2024 as Black History Month. Whereas since 1926 and the creation of Negro History Week by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the accomplishments of persons of African descent have been recognized each February. And whereas the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments Black Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation. And whereas Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders with special ceremonies and activities. And whereas in 2016, to celebrate Black History Month, the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights introduced Future History Makers, renamed to History Makers at Home, a profile series featuring emerging and mid-career leaders from the Twin Cities African-American community who share the department's ideals of advancing civil rights and removing barriers to equity. And whereas the department identifies trendsetters in the areas of business, criminal justice, education, economic development, health, philanthropy, housing, and government, and defined them as History Makers at Home. And whereas the department also recognizes the kinship of the work of trend-setting history makers to those who are legacy trailblazers. And whereas to support and foster our own History Makers at Home in the City of Minneapolis enterprise, an employee resource group to support Black city employees, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network was created on February 23rd, 2017. That's all of you folks up here. Thank you for being here. And whereas each week throughout Black History Month, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network uplifts History Makers at Home, hosting events that shine the light on dedicated leaders in the Twin Cities region and shares the stories of those who are making a positive impact and inspiring future generations, as well as recognize legacy leaders who paved the path. And whereas on February 23rd, 2023, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network will proudly celebrate its seven-year anniversary. And—
Thank you. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers Black city employees peer support, mentoring, professional development, career counseling, and well-being supportive services. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers the City of Minneapolis recommendations on action steps to recruit, retain, support, and engage Black leaders to the city's workforce. And whereas Black history and the contributions of peoples of African descent are honored and uplifted at the City of Minneapolis, not only in the month of February, but throughout the entire year. And whereas Black history and the contributions of peoples of African descent are honored and lifted up—I think I read this line already—at the City of Minneapolis, not only in the month of February, but throughout the entire year. And whereas the City of Minneapolis, in partnership with Hennepin County and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, recognizes Juneteenth as an official holiday for employees and celebrates the week with activities to commemorate June 19th, 1865. On that day, what was believed to be the last of enslaved persons in the United States of America received news of their entitlement to natural-born human rights under the law bestowed upon them two and a half years earlier when President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official January 1, 1863. And whereas each year in late July, to kick off August as Black Business Month, we celebrate Black Business Week, created in 2019 by encouraging patriotism of Black-owned businesses and bringing city officials and other government and civic leaders of economic development organizations and members of the business and broader community together to address the unique experiences of Black businesses. This is an effort to increase and improve connections, ownership, funding opportunities, and business technical assistance to Black entrepreneurs. And whereas the City Council in 2020 adopted a resolution declaring racism as a public health emergency, committing the city of Minneapolis to recognize the severe impact of racism on the well-being of residents and city overall, and allocate funding, staff, and additional resources to actively engage in racial equity in order to name, reverse, and repair the harm done to Black, Indigenous, and people of color of the city. And whereas the City Council in 2020 adopted a resolution establishing truth and reconciliation process for the City of Minneapolis, believed to be the first of its kind to focus on both historically Black American descendants of slavery and African and American Indian communities. The work of this body will help a truth and reconciliation commission to begin implementing specific solutions to specific harms that created and perpetuate racial disparities among both groups. And whereas each year, we will continue to highlight dedicated Black leaders in Minneapolis and the Twin Cities region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the achievements of Black Americans as history makers, legacy trailblazers, and their role in the development of the region and the nation since its inception. And we join in recognizing the annual celebration of Black History Month and the anniversary of the Minneapolis Black Employee Network. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you all so much. Thank you for the work that you do each and every day on behalf of the city and its residents. And thank you for standing up in your—in our cultural heritage and being leaders of this city. Thank you so much. Would anyone like to say a few words? And I want us to get a little closer together so we can get a nice big photo.
No, I would like to thank Council President Payne, Past President Jenkins, and Member of the Council for this great honor. And I just want to invite every one of you—to join us as we celebrate, as we educate, as we recognize throughout the month of February. Thank you.
Can you all come forward and then— behind each other so we can squeeze it in a little bit? Yeah, yeah. You had a towel once for us to back? Okay, that means you need to come forward so you can be—okay. Right over here, right? I can't. Yeah.
Get in. Just wait.
Where's Diva? Perfect, Diva, right there. Great. Oh, I'm good. Yeah, I'm thinking—yeah.
It's Diva's camera. Diva will send it to you.
Month. Can we have staff come up and join us?
Good morning. Good morning. Again, my name is Andrea Jenkins, representing Ward Eight. And before I start this resolution, I do just want to shout out my senior policy aide, Diva Sadar, who actually wrote both of these resolutions. And so really want to just thank her for her work on this with our staff, members Shenu and so many others who have contributed to making this resolution what it is. So thank you, Diva. Yes, yes. And Shenu, right? All righty. So this resolution recognizing January 2024 as Human Trafficking and Exploitation Awareness Month. Whereas the trafficking of peoples of all ages is an issue of continuing and significant national impact. And whereas to combat the exploitation and human trafficking of peoples in the United States, the U.S. Congress passed the Trafficking Victims Protection Act in 2000 and has subsequently reauthorized the bill seven times after that. And whereas today, people in our community, including the most marginalized community members, still experience sexual and labor exploitation and sex and labor trafficking. And whereas individuals experiencing poverty, homelessness, chemical dependency, mental health challenges, and those identifying as LGBTQI+ and from BIPOC, Black Indigenous, People of Color communities, as well as members of the international migrant community, including undocumented immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers, face compounded risk and are more likely to become targets of exploitation and trafficking. And whereas it is essential to acknowledge that individuals engaged in transactional sex, the majority from communities of color and those identifying as LGBTQIA+ or within sex industries, experience significant stigma and disproportionately face criminal consequences. And whereas it holds significance to note that the term transactional sex was chosen here as a way to acknowledge and respect the broad spectrum of experiences in alignment with terminology choice made by the Process Advisory Group for the Safe Harbor for All Report. And—
Whereas Human Trafficking and Exploitation Awareness Month exists to uphold community members' dignity and safety while recognizing the inherent vulnerability within this sector, vulnerability which often results in exploitation and human trafficking, and to underscore comprehensive measures that address these challenges in order to foster an environment that prioritizes the well-being and safety of those engaged in transactional sex while actively combating exploitation and human trafficking within our community. And whereas in December 2013, the City Council adopted Resolution 2013-R-540, pledging to combat commercial sexual exploitation and trafficking of juveniles, establishing the Minneapolis Coordinating Committee to prevent juvenile sex trafficking. And since then, the city has implemented policies, programs, and collaborative efforts to support survivors and—survivors and end—or prevent exploitation and trafficking. And whereas the city has continuously shown leadership on this issue through the work of the Minneapolis Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, the Minneapolis Health Department, the Civil Rights Department, the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, Regulatory Services, the City Coordinator's Office, Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Department, and Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. And—
Whereas the city has reinforced its commitment to prevent exploitation, including through enacting ordinances, raising the minimum wage to $15 per hour, providing safe and sick time for low-wage workers, collecting lost wages, ensuring protection for adult entertainers and freelancers, allocating funding for a permanent trafficking prevention program within the City Coordinator's Office, and investing in the coenforcement of labor ordinances and other essential programs and services. And whereas the city has developed a report titled "A Holistic Response to Human Trafficking and Exploitation: A Framework for Action," drafted after an extensive two-and-a-half-year engagement process with internal and external stakeholders and funded by the Pathways to Freedom Grant. And whereas in recognition the disproportionate impact of the COVID pandemic had on Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and additional communities, including those identifying as LGBTQIA+, the city invested $650,000 in ARPA funding to the Upside Initiative to offer intensive care and support to individuals affected by commercial sexual exploitation and human trafficking in Minneapolis. And whereas the Upside Initiative, a successful collaboration involving the Family Partnership, the Link, Breaking Free, Minnesota India Women's Resource Center, has shown documented impact, reaching 4,341 individuals over the course of two years through a combination of individuals, outreach, and group initiatives, a commendable success story in providing support and care for those affected by commercial sexual exploitation and human trafficking in Minneapolis. And whereas the city has expressed its commitment to work to make Minneapolis a safe, healthy, respectful, loving, and peaceful place for all adults, children, youth, elders, and people of all ages, genders, culture, immigration statuses, and walks of life.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby recognize January 2024 as Human Trafficking and Exploitation Awareness Month in the City of Minneapolis. Thank you. Would you like to say any words?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins, Council President Payne, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmembers, and Mayor Fry. I'd really like to take this opportunity to thank each one of you for your unwavering support in driving forward our efforts in fighting human trafficking and exploitation in the City of Minneapolis and ensuring that the city is safe, healthy, and thriving for all members in our city. It's actually been an incredible journey since the passes of the resolution in 2013, pledging to tackle the issue of sexual exploitation and sex trafficking of juveniles. Under your guidance and leadership, we've expanded that focus to include all forms of human trafficking, which includes both labor trafficking and sex trafficking, and all forms of exploitation, which includes labor exploitation and sexual exploitation of all people without any age restrictions. We've also partnered with many stakeholders internally and externally over the years to make impactful outcomes, to make significant progress, tangible outcomes. Those have been felt by many within the bounds of Minneapolis and beyond. Many folks who are with me here at the dais—I don't know what it's called, dais or podium—I always get confused—but here with me today are on the ground or at the forefront, fighting human trafficking and exploitation each and every single day. I'd just like to very quickly acknowledge and express my sincere gratitude, our partners: the Link, the Family Partnership, Minnesota Department of Health, the Safe Harbor Program at the Department of Health, CITOL Sexual Violence Center, Breaking Free, the Advocates for Human Rights, researchers like Dr. Lauren Martin at University of Minnesota, and many other organizations internally which have been spelled out in the resolution as well. Once again, thank you to all of you who are present in the room and to those of you who couldn't join us today. Thank you for your hard work, your tireless advocacy in fighting human trafficking and exploitation each and every day and ensuring safety and dignity for all people in Minneapolis and beyond. And with that, I'll pass this microphone to Caroline to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Shenu. Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins, Council President Payne, and Councilmember Chavez, as well as all members of the council and Mayor Fry. My name is Caroline Palmer. I am the Safe Harbor Director at the Minnesota Department of Health. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide a brief statement today. We greatly appreciate this important resolution to reaffirm the city's pledge to combat the exploitation and human trafficking of all people as part of Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Minnesota's Human Trafficking Response Network is built on partnerships with state, local, and tribal governments, community-based services programs, and survivor subject matter experts. Between MDH and the Minnesota Department of Human Services, we administer over 50 grants, then in combination provide supportive services, shelter, and outreach to sexually exploited youth through age 24, as well as victims of labor trafficking and exploitation of all ages. We fund and partner with service programs in Minneapolis, many of whom you're going to hear from this morning. And we also work closely with the city's senior advisor, Shenu, in the Human Trafficking and Exploitation Prevention Initiative. Our cross-government partnership with the city has resulted in valuable work in the overlapping issues of human trafficking and substance use, for example, as well as ongoing coordination in response to emerging local, state, and national issues affecting youth and adult survivors of human trafficking in Minneapolis and our state. According to our most recent biennial Safe Harbor Evaluation Report, the West Metro Regional Navigator Region, which includes Minneapolis, had the most intakes, enrollments, total services, and exits from services in the state. From MDH's perspective, we know how crucial it is to support the efforts of our Minneapolis-based city partners to provide trauma-informed, youth-centered, culturally responsive, and survivor-led services for all communities affected. We specifically focus on reaching individuals who face the greatest risks of harm due to social inequities, including racism and poverty, as well as actions undermining the health and well-being of LGBTQIA+ non-binary, two-spirit, and immigrant individuals. The work of human trafficking in our state is grounded in collaboration across disciplines, systems, and cultures to address these and other harms. MDH thanks the council for its recognition of the impact human trafficking and exploitation have in the city and for its ongoing efforts to support the work of community partners who are committed tirelessly to meeting the needs of victims and survivors every day. Thank you so much again. You can find information about our statewide response on the MDH website.
I'm here from the Family Partnership and just want to thank and acknowledge the city for the funding they gave us for the Upside Initiative and talk a little bit about what we were able to do with that money. Trafficking and exploitation affects people's lives sort of across their entire life, making both leaving and healing something that's not straightforward. It was so meaningful to have this kind of funding that we could use in flexible ways to build trust, meet people's real needs, and bring people ongoing safety. We were able to do outreach to let people know of safe places and people to go to, as well as meeting daily needs. We were able to provide hotel stays for individuals leaving trafficking or for whom traditional shelter was unsafe or unavailable, especially for our trans youth. We were able to fix cars when somebody was living out of their car and still needed a safe place to live, or when they needed to be able to get to work or get to school. We were able to pay off things like court fees to clear the path to getting a license or to not have a warrant so somebody could finally feel safe to call for help when they were in danger. We continue to serve people after this grant, of course, providing collaborative clinics, bringing low-bear resources to people each month, continue to provide ongoing case management and drop-in centers, and continuing to answer the Upside phone number that we began to use during this time to serve and respond to people quickly.
Thank you so much. My name's Beth Holger. I am the CEO of the Link and part of the Upside Collaborative. And I first and foremost want to sincerely thank Councilmember Jenkins and Chavez and Council President Payne. And I also, as a person that lives and resides in North Minneapolis, I have to give a special shout-out to our North Minneapolis council members, Vitale and Allison, who have been so supportive and helpful. I have worked with—I've had the honor and the privilege to work on the front lines with youth experiencing trafficking and exploitation since the late '90s. And the Link, if you don't know about us, just real briefly, we're partners with the Family Partnership. They do amazing work and so many others. But we provide emergency shelters, street outreach, housing, and a variety of frontline crisis support for youth and young families experiencing homelessness, sex trafficking, exploitation, or who are involved in the juvenile justice—we call it the non-justice system. And I just want to say that, you know, on human—I don't want to repeat what anybody just said because I agree with all of it, but January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. But I'm hoping people can carry this resolution and these words and these remembrance of these people forward every day because I want to really lift up and honor the youth and the adults who are just incredibly brave survivors of sex trafficking and exploitation, and also those that we have lost. Unfortunately, we lose a lot of people to sex trafficking every year. It's definitely not a victimless crime. It causes so much harm. We've worked with youth—I could tell you all the, you know, tons and tons of stories, but they're unimaginable and things that no one should ever have to go through. And I know in Minnesota, Minneapolis, it's hard to believe it's happening. We've seen youth as young as 10, 11, all the way up to 24, our partners see adults. No matter what, it is horrific. We've worked with young people who have been beaten with baseball bats, left in the trunks of cars. We have worked with youth who have been thrown out of moving vehicles. We've worked with youth who have had their—the traffickers have kidnapped their babies as leverage to keep them in the trafficking situation. So it's really serious. And so I just really hope that this resolution can be on the front of everybody's minds. I know—I am not qualified, and even if I were, I would never want any of your jobs at the city council. I can only imagine how hard it is, the pressing issues you have to face, and the budget. But sex trafficking should definitely be up there. And so I just really urge the city to remember these amazing, amazing people that are getting victimized by sex trafficking and sexual exploitation and lift them up in your policies and budgets. Because a lot of times, they can't make it down here themselves. So thank you so much for the time and thank you so much for your support.
Hi, my name is Veronica Mendez-Moore. I'm co-director of CITOL. And I want to say thank you to our city council members. I want to say thank you especially to Shenu and to all of the community organizations that are here that have really put a spotlight on this issue. Like folks said, this is something that people don't see every day. This happens in the shadows. And most of us walk through our day not knowing—not thinking about the fact that labor trafficking and that sex trafficking exist. In our work at CITOL in organizing with workers, we have seen significant amounts of labor trafficking that have been horrifying to us. And we've been able to partner with the city. We've been able to partner with the county to actually bring some of these cases forward to be able to ensure that workers have the dignity of doing their job, being safe, and getting paid. And we have worked— And we have worked a lot with the city and with the Labor Standards Enforcement Department on wage theft. Where there is human trafficking, labor trafficking, there is wage theft, 100%. And so we focus our energies on wage theft and on ensuring that there are safe working conditions to make sure that people aren't exploited in this way and to get ahead of it before it happens, and then to support workers on the back end when it does. And so we think also the efforts that the city has made, the ordinances that have been passed around people's rights, around wage theft, around 15, around Earn, Sick, and Safe Time, all of these labor practices help create the environment in the workplace that makes it harder to traffic workers. And so we appreciate that work. We know it's important. Another step in this that's also critically important is the passing of Labor Standards Boards, which will be a conversation a little bit later. That is a key piece of this in strengthening workers' protections and also all of the work that we're all doing here to really lift up this issue so that we can all see it with new eyes and find a way to combat it. Thank you.
So good to see you.
As we let folks start getting settled in, I first want to acknowledge that Holocaust Remembrance Day is coming up on the 27th, and what's so important about that day is it marks the day that the Red Army liberated Auschwitz, and when we started to really start the process of understanding the true scope and scale of the Holocaust. And it's important to mark that day because the call is to have it happen never again. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are having that in the back of our mind as we take up today's agenda, which is pretty packed, to be honest. And I want to acknowledge that what we're going to be discussing today is of the highest sensitivity, and it's also of the highest urgency as well. We don't just have a resolution to talk about what's happening abroad, we also have a lot of introductions for what's happening here at home. We have an encampment policy, actual several encampment policies that we're trying to advance through this body. We're trying to address some of the inequities that exist here at home through some of the displacement that's occurred as a result of the history of our country. And we're trying to hold a lot of truths all at the same time, and many of those truths are in direct tension and conflict with each other. And so as we get started with today's agenda, I just want to remind everyone about those truths and those tensions, and I want to invite everyone to give each other grace as you sit within those truths. I want everybody to feel welcome in this space. I want everyone to recognize that we have a very important job to do here today and that you are heard when we are able to do the work of this body through the democratic process, and it's through this democratic process that allows us to hold multiple truths at the same time, even when those truths are in tension. I also want to recognize that today is my first day presiding over a full council meeting as president, and so I just really want to express my gratitude to all of my colleagues who've entrusted this responsibility to me, and I really want to help set a tone that for this term, for this day and for the rest of the term, I want to really conduct the business of this body in a really open and transparent way, an inclusive way, in a way that allows people's voices to be heard, in a way that allows the broader community to participate in our local government. And so with that, it's my pleasure to call this first regular meeting of the city council for its 2024-2025 term to order. For the record, I'll note that today is Thursday, January 25th. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to prove the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitale.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 13 ayes.
I'll let the record reflect the presence of a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. I'll ask if there are any amendments to the agenda. Not seeing any, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
I'll let the record reflect that that carries and the agenda is adopted. The next item is the acceptance of the minutes from the meetings conducted December 5th and December 7th last year, as well as the minutes of our organizational meeting on January 8th. I'd entertain a motion to accept all of those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those minutes have been accepted, and finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
I'll let the record reflect that that carries and the agenda is adopted. The next item is the acceptance of the minutes from the meetings conducted December 5th and December 7th last year, as well as the minutes of our organizational meeting on January 8th. I'd entertain a motion to accept all of those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item 1.4, which has two nays, and number four, which has one nay.
And then, Mr. Clerk, if you could give Mr. Councilmember Rainville maybe some guidance.
And I'm sorry, I missed that. I captured two councilmembers who said no on item 1.4. That was Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Vitale, and I heard Councilmember Rainville say no on number four.
I think he intended 1.4. I apologize, this was a clerk, it was my mistake. That was my intention, as Council President Payne stated. Thank you.
The result is 13 ayes on the report except for the item 1.4, which has three nays.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Council President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward-
Fourteen is authorizing contract amendment with Mengar Construction Company, Inc., for the Fifteenth Street East Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Fifteen is authorizing contract amendment with Keystone Compensation Group, LLC, for classification and compensation services. Sixteen is authorizing contract amendment with Rachel Contracting, LLC, for the Kmart Demolition Project. Seventeen is authorizing contract amendment with Egan Company for the Fritley Campus Electrical Rehabilitation Construction Project. Eighteen is authorizing a contract amendment with Meyer Contracting, Inc., for the Signals Storm Sewer and curb ramp improvement projects. Nineteen is approving a vehicle no-fault benefit claim processing authorization for Flavio Marcelo La La Cincinchi. And twenty is authorizing a contract amendment with Rachel Contracting, LLC, for contract closeout for the Hiawatha Public Works Phase Two Demolition Project. With that, I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval for the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to comment on a couple of items on the agenda. Number four, I want to just thank Amanda Temple for being willing to continue to serve on the Minneapolis Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. Also, just want to, I guess, admonish my colleagues. The other day, there was some conversation about people being able to walk and chew gum. And I heard from residents and constituents who felt like that was a disparaging comment because some people cannot walk, but they still have the capacity to be able to contribute mightily to our society. And so I wanted to lift that up. Language matters. As we use these euphemisms, we have to be aware of the impact that they might have on other communities. So I wanted to lift that up. Also, I wanted to just say I'm thankful for the contract that we are entering into with Formula. And I believe the community, I'm sorry, the Cultural Wellness Center, to provide services, to really think about how we are going to vision and engage with the community around George Floyd Square. And then lastly, just acknowledge that we are beginning the process or completing the process of the demolition of the Kmart site at Lake at Nicolet. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins, and thank you for continuing to hold us accountable and making sure that we are as inclusive as we can in our language. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, which will be given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Business, Housing, Zoning Committee is bringing forward five items. Item one is approving six liquor license. Item two is approving hundred and twenty-one liquor license renewals. Item three is approving five gambling license. Item four is approving four heritage preservation commission council appointments. And item five is approving rezoning at eighteen twenty-eight Dupont Avenue North. I approve, I move approval for all those items. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussions? Not seeing any. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
No on number four, aye on the rest.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye on all except one point four.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye on all except one point four.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes on the report except for item one point four, which has two nays, and number four, which has one nay.
And then, Mr. Clerk, if you could give Mr. Councilmember Rainville maybe some guidance.
And I'm sorry, I missed that. I captured two councilmembers who said no on item one point four. That was Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Vitak, and I heard Councilmember Rainville say no on number four.
I think he intended one point four.
I apologize, Mr. Clerk, it was my mistake. That was my intention, as Council President Payne stated.
The result is thirteen ayes on the report except for the item one point four, which has three nays.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Council President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward nine items. One, the Great Northern Ice Bar Event Permit for January twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth and January thirty-first through February fourth. Two, in agreement with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District for Programmatic Maintenance. And on this item, we have an amendment in front of us to strike the portion that covers wetland buffers and protection. The request comes from public work staff after further discussion to account for the fact that projects impacting wetlands require separate permit from the watershed district, which includes preparation of a project-specific wetland buffer maintenance agreement with the watershed district. Additionally, there is concern that inclusion of wetland buffer maintenance in a general programmatic agreement may not allow for a thoughtful nuanced plan. I will move this revised version of the amendment. Number three, contract with Hennepin County for Waste Disposal Services. Number four, contract amendment to agreement with Hennepin County to offset organics tipping fees paid by the city for processing of organics collected through the organics recycling program. Number five, North Transfer Station Revitalization Project Appropriation Amendment. Number six, updates to parking and mobility services fee and rate schedule. And after discussion with some members of the committee and public work staff, I'm going to move to refer this item back to committee for further discussion at our next committee meeting. Number seven, grant application to Metropolitan Council Environmental Services for municipal infiltration inflow reduction. Number eight, adjusted twenty twenty-four capital appropriations for Lake at Nicolet Reopening Project and Fremont Alley Project. Number nine, Metropolitan Council Environmental Services grant for private sewer lateral repairs. I move approval of the committee's report, including the amendment in front of us for item two and referring item number six back to committee.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report, including the amendment to item number two and referring item number six back to committee. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to briefly comment on item number one, the Great Northern Ice Bar Events. This is an activation for Nicolet Mall, which is during the wintertime, obviously, so it's good to see downtown coming alive again. And this is another example how we can utilize Nicolet Mall for people, not buses.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I am, I have a question about item number six, returning to committee. We've had extensive conversation about this topic, and I don't serve on that committee, so I'm trying to understand where we are in the process. What is, why are we returning this to, why are we returning this to committee?
Uh, Council President, I can speak to that.
Certainly.
Uh, public work staff did bring a resolution or an ordinance that split up the issue of the towing fees and impound lot from the issue of raising parking fees across the city. And in committee, we didn't necessarily get all the answers on the parking side of it. And so rather than discuss it in the council meeting today, I talked with public works, and we'll just revisit it in committee again with the council members who did have issues about some of the parking fee increases. And I think it also speaks to just me being a new committee chair of a committee and understanding the philosophy and the policy behind parking increases, that I would appreciate having more time with the public work staff to discuss it so that I can be a good communicator between the staff and the other committee members.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report carries and is adopted. The next report will be from our committee of Sir. Sir, sir. I'm Okay. Let's take a moment to let that settle and for our colleagues to come back. Colleagues, I'm going to call a five-minute recess while we allow some of this to settle. So please be patient with us. Thank you. We will return at, I'll call it a seven-and-a-half-minute recess. We will turn at ten thirty-five. Tech team, are we ready? Okay, I am going to call this meeting back to order and ask the clerk to take roll call.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitak.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins? No. Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are twelve members present.
Let the record reflect that we have the presence of a quorum, and before we get into the next committee report, I think this is a great time for a reminder that we don't tolerate Islamophobia in this space. We don't tolerate antisemitism in this space. We don't tolerate hate speech in this space. You are all welcome to be here. You are all welcome to participate in this process. You are not welcome to disrupt this process. And so I'm going to give a just general announcement to that end, and as a general advisory, I'll announce that the council's rules do not permit comments from the public except during a properly noticed hearing or comment period. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the city. It is not a forum for public testimony or comments. Under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, meetings of the city council and its committees are open to the public for the purpose of observation only. Consistent with council rules, individuals who purposely disrupt or disrupt or disturb these proceedings and interfere with this body's ability to conduct the business of the city will be asked to leave. Those who refuse to follow these rules may be removed from the chamber. This is just a general advisory. Let's just all reset and come back ready to do the business of the city and do it in a way that respects each other. And Councilmember Ellison.
Could everybody hear me? Thank you. Just wanted to really quickly apologize to the body. I, you know, broke decorum, and I don't want to set a tone that, you know, for members of the public who couldn't hear what was going on, you know, I was responding to what I thought was a very Islamophobic comment, but I did break the rules of the council in doing so. And so I just wanted to apologize to my colleagues and to the public. And speaking across the dais is not something that I plan to make a habit of, and so wanted to offer that to the council. So thank you all.
I really appreciate that point of accountability and keeping us on track. And I also want to thank the mayor for joining us today. We're really glad to see you. The next report will be from our Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. The Committee of the Whole is bringing three items for approval. Item number one is appointment of councilmembers to various boards, commissions, and committees. Item number two is City Council Rules of Order, the twenty twenty-four revision. And item number three is the support for permanent ceasefire and preventing the loss of human life in the Middle East. I understand that there's a super last-minute walk-on item for this item, number three, so I'll pull that aside for discussion and a separate vote and move item number one and number two for approval.
Councilmember Chavez has moved items one and two of the committee's report. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Palmasano.
Yes.
Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Chadri.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and those items of the report are adopted. Next, we will take up item number three. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't a walk-on item, but I would like to make a motion for a substitute for item number three. That substitute that I would like to bring forward is the one entitled Supporting Peace and Humanity in the Middle East. You'll also see that due to a couple of things from our city attorney's office, there's one that says "new" on the top right. That's the one that I am referring to. The one that says "new", and the bold-faced saying "Supporting Peace and Humanity in the Middle East". I'd like to make a couple of comments on that, but I will need a second for that substitute. If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep, that motion has been moved and seconded.
At our organizing meeting on January eighth, I made it clear that there were other ways to promote a ceasefire in the Middle East. I suggested ways different than doing a resolution. And this body proceeded regardless. It was hard to hear as I was getting shouted down. The statement I used that was unintentionally provocative, "War is hell", that's what I said. I was bullied, shamed, shouted down repeatedly, and we lost complete control of that meeting. When we speak about foreign policy and conflict thousands of miles away, we must do so to speak for our residents through a common microphone. And we must do so in a way that unifies our city and doesn't divide it. We should not fuel the fire of this hurt and this hatred on our own home front. In my own memory, we've never done a resolution on foreign policy that wasn't unanimous as a body. If we can't do something that we all agree on here, then what is your point? I fear this shows some members' agenda quite clearly. And this, this process, this assertion of "we'll bring forward your amendments", that is going to be a zero-sum game. There were no finite number of deletions or additions that I could make that would make this a unifying document. As mentioned several times by my colleagues at committee, the defense of humanity is a shared project. And that's a really good statement, and that's a shared value of mine. To that end, I wanted to show you these substitute motions. I'd like to offer something that can be done while taking into account the feelings and experiences of our Jewish neighbors and many others with personal connections and impacts to this war. It keeps being put in front of me that over sixty localities have called for a ceasefire. Who wouldn't if they thought it could have an impact? We all would. We all in this room would. Nearest to us, though quite a bit smaller, is Hastings, Minnesota. That's been brought up and they called for a ceasefire too. And have you seen their ceasefire resolution? Because it is now before you. I come prepared with all the copies to suggest we could instead take their words and adopt them as our own today. You'll see that this is nothing like the resolution before us. We also know there was a ceasefire in place on October seventh, so I won't go into the details of that. I won't go into the details of that. Ceasefire is not what this is about. This is about wanting to become the city with the most radical, far-reaching resolution to support one side, and I do not read your language any other way. I've consistently urged a different path here. So instead, in effort to do as my colleagues said, "Well, defense of humanity is a shared project", this is my best attempt to neutralize the language that we are using, to be sensitive to different lenses, as council president mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. Not because we speak as individuals, we can all do that, but to speak as a city or even as a city council, we have to balance our personal stories with speaking for everyone. "Where did this language come from?", I was asked. Well, we've been hearing loud and clear, hang on, let me only speak for myself. I can see this plainly. This resolution that is on the agenda today is lopsided. Let's uplift all human life. This, I think, this substitute motion is where we get. We are mourning, we are angry, but we are holding everyone precious. So this substitute calls for sovereign states and immediate ceasefire. And to me, this is hearing you and hearing hundreds and hundreds of others and reconciling my own feelings and people impacted by horrific atrocities of barbaric assault during a ceasefire and the subsequent disproportionate response by the Israeli government, which has only recently been making changes from a public perspective. This substitute removes the numbers of casualties, which are disproportionate in number. I think it's twenty-five to one when I had this conversation with Councilmember Chadri last night. I heard that feels minimizing. And we can put those numbers back in if we want to put them in on all sides here. I did not want to get those numbers wrong. And as you can see, they need to be continuously, sadly, updated. This substitute asserts the knowledge, the acknowledgement of this conflict having deeply personal ties to home, to here, to Minneapolis. Only a few colleagues reached out as I brought this up. And I want to specifically point out that Councilmember Chadri was one of them. And she and I disagree, but I've got to hand it to her because not only have we stayed in conversation on this since December, she has shown a sense of cooperation in this effort like no one else, and I appreciate that. Some will express surprise that this wasn't brought forward sooner. This isn't a walk-on, this is a substitute motion. I am not here to throw flames at something I already see as inflammatory. That wouldn't help anything. And I'm not here to make my colleagues take fractious and divisive votes. I could have brought a dozen amendments that would have done just that, but you all know that I didn't. I'm not here to burn bridges, though I'm pretty stunned at how many of you chose to held a press conference on this matter before consulting with our mayor, who, as you know, has ancestors who were annihilated in the Holocaust. To me, that's a preview of acting without disregard for consequences and what this means for our city. That felt to me a bit like burning a bridge before this term even started. So let's work with our mayor, who happens to be the only Jewish person in this governing body. I couldn't make your resolution better, and I sure couldn't make it balanced. And I'm here to do the work of the city and not carry the illusion that I should be trying to influence foreign policy abroad. There's too much to do right here in our city. If you want time to consider this, there are other potential reasons to postpone this action today, as mentioned by the council president this morning. The city of Chicago has chosen to postpone theirs this week as well. But if you are set on doing this today, I submit this substitute for your consideration. And regardless for any outcome of these votes today, we need to move on and get back to the work that we have direct influence over. So I urge that whatever the outcome of this here today, we move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. And before I call on Councilmember Chavez, I just want to remind everyone on the body to please not to ascribe motivations to the actions of any member. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. I want to provide some public and critical information for the public to understand. Last night at nine forty-five PM, Councilmember Palmasano sent an email of one of these latest versions less than twelve hours before this vote at full council. As an author of this resolution, I am quite shocked and I feel disrespected that I did not even get a courtesy call about this last-minute and divisive motion that is meant to strike headlines in the media rather than bring people together. Councilmember Palmasano originally brought two different items in front of us, one which was not reviewed by the city attorney after I confirmed with the city attorney, and then another one that was brought just now, recently, to the dais, I believe maybe after consulting with the city attorney after I had that conversation. We should not expect half-baked items coming before the city council when we had ample opportunity to do committee work in committee. This substitute could have been brought to the committee process, a process that we are really intentional that brought community members together. I worked closely with council leadership to bring our original motion that we will pass today to committee of the whole so that our constituents could weigh in. It is not our fault that members of this body who are against our ceasefire resolution did not engage in the committee process and make amendments. I understand there's pressure to do so now because the media reported so. But this motion is being done in a dark, it's not publicized, there's no time to review it, to make amendments, and I find it frustrating that the author calls this unifying when we just forwarded our resolution to the full council with nine votes. And now this is coming with no time to review and bring our colleagues together. I am more than happy, as the chair of the committee of the whole, to work with Councilmember Palmasano to bring her new ceasefire resolution through committee of the whole, through an open public process where the public has time to weigh in. I can get on board with voting for two ceasefire resolutions. I think we all understand the gravity of this situation. So I can't support this substitute because it's not transparent. There is no public process. The public does not know what is in this language. But I am more than happy to support another process if Councilmember Palmasano wants to entertain this for two more weeks so we can vote for two ceasefire resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. And before I call on Councilmember Palmasano in the priority queue, I just again want to remind folks, please do not ascribe motivations. I believe Councilmember Palmasano is showing up in good faith with the intention of trying to bring forward language that is unifying. Although, we are trying to do this in a very open and transparent process, so it's understandable why there are frustrations, but please don't ascribe motivations to those frustrations. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's mostly what I was going to say. I also wanted to correct that I did send this language. And my intent of putting the Hastings one before us is so that we actually read the Hastings one and can compare it to what we have in our own resolution that's on the agenda today. It's quite a bit different, but I'm not moving that forward. I sent this near the end of the day. I didn't, until later, make a small change at the time ascribed by Councilmember Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. Over the past several weeks, I've heard from family, friends, neighbors, communities, and organizations. I've heard "vote yes", "vote no", and everything in between. I've heard of the rising Islamophobia and antisemitism. I've heard anger, fear, and pain. I've heard how what is happening across the world, here in this country and here in this community is deeply impacting each and every one of us. The common thread between all of what I've heard is that each and every person, myself included, feels a deep need to express their support, their need for an immediate ceasefire, for the release of all held captive, for humanitarian aid, and for ongoing peace in their own way. The Israeli-Palestinian conflict is extremely complex and one that presidents, congresses, government officials, diplomats, and conflict resolution experts have spent decades working to resolve. I do not believe we will be able to solve it here today, but I do believe that we will be able to all express in our own way an immediate ceasefire for the release of all held captive, for humanitarian aid, and for ongoing peace. Right here, right now, that is what I want to support. That is what I want to work towards. That is what I want to push others to work towards as well. And that is something I can do without disappointing, angering, triggering, dividing, or isolating part of my community or the other, part of this city or the other, by choosing one side or the other here in this room. And that is why I will be abstaining from the vote on any resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kosky. Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm in twice. I'm going to speak first and I'm in for the mayor also. He wants to speak. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Palmasano for the substitute motion that you've brought forward today. I'm pretty sure everyone in this room and who's following this issue know how I feel about it. And I had not planned on voting on anything because I want to focus on the business of Ward Four and the city of Minneapolis, but I've had hundreds, if not thousands, of people reach out to me and say, "My voice has not been heard in this process", and it hurts. And it feels like the council is trying to divide this community with this resolution. So first, I want to apologize to the Jewish community. You've been dismissed. You've been silenced through this process, throughout this process, and your pain has not been acknowledged. You were brutally attacked on October seventh. At least a hundred of your people are still being held hostage, including babies. Hamas has rejected numerous ceasefire proposals from Israel, Egypt, Qatar. The last ceasefire in November was broken by Hamas when they refused to release all the women hostages. I just want you to know that I see you. You deserve equal representation, and I want you to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vitah. Mayor Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. I'm not here today because I think that this is the best first issue for this council to tackle. I'm not here because I have expertise in foreign relations or diplomacy. I'm a mayor. I'm also a Jew. And I'm here because our city needs unity right now. We need to be taking care of our people, all of our people. And this proposed resolution, the first proposed resolution misses the mark. I support a ceasefire. I support a return of hostages. I support a two-state solution, including both a sovereign Palestine and a sovereign Israel. And I support a resolution that can bring people together, not divide us. I would sign a resolution that meets those ends and draws those conclusions. This resolution, however, is one-sided. It chooses what context and history to include and what context and history to ignore. All of us have our own histories. At times, they're different. That doesn't make them any less valid or truthful, but it does cause fraction. It does cause faction, especially when we decide to include one side but not another. I too believe in a great project for humanity, but that project must importantly not exclude Israeli Jews. So much of the narrative that I have heard imparts what is an American history on the state of Israel. Israel has its own very complex history, a history that includes both Arabs and Jews. And importantly, that history is not the same colonial history that we have seen here in America. Israel largely was founded by refugees. Tens of thousands of people coming from Iraq and Iran, over a hundred thousand from places like Morocco. Two million Jews were slaughtered in Poland. One million Jews slaughtered in the Soviet Union, and three million more across Europe. The orphans of these families that were killed, many of them landed in Israel. This resolution does give important context that is relevant and is truthful to Palestinians. I do not shun their histories and stories. To do so would be exclusionary. But the same applies to Jews. And the context that is left out is that the state of Israel again was founded by refugees and people escaping war, discrimination, persecution, and slaughter. And so including some people's history is as valid, truthful, and righteous as it may be, while ignoring others is neither progressive nor is it inclusive. It's just sad. But in addition to being sad, so many Jews throughout our city and throughout the world right now are afraid. Things have gotten scary. When my wife and I went to the tiny Jewish section in the grocery store the other day, there were stickers placed on all the products saying, "You support genocide", stickers on all the Jewish and Israeli products. I've seen photos and videos of councilmembers standing in front of signs, reading, quote, "USA is occupied by Zionists more than Palestine", which is a centuries-old trope. We all watched in horror on October seventh. And then hours later, elected officials, organizations spoke out, not against the atrocities and what Hamas did, not against the killing, the rape, and the mutilation of innocent people, but oftentimes they rushed to condemn Israel all before a single counterattack even took place. Even worse, some actually supported the Hamas massacre. Even worse, some actually supported the Hamas massacre. Councilmembers have joined press conferences in front of my face, displayed an effigy with a Hitler mustache, never mind that he slaughtered my extended community. Jews have been harassed at meetings, chased into elevators, my temple has been targeted with hate, my friends have been horrified by the blatant antisemitism and Islamophobia spread online. And I ask, what if the previous examples that I just mentioned in the above scenario, what if we replaced the word "Jewish" with "black" or "native" or "Somali" or "among"? What if I wasn't a Jewish mayor, but a black or a Muslim mayor? I hope that we, as a body, would stand up then, and we, as a body, should be standing up now. Many Jews are fearful, fearful right now, and a one-sided Minneapolis resolution only raises that fear. You can be pro-Israel and pro-Palestine. I am. You can be pro-Israel and anti-Netanyahu. I am. You can, of course, criticize the Israeli government without being anti-Semitic. I often do. And of course, you can criticize Hamas as a terrorist organization, which the proposed, uh, previous resolution fails to do, while also standing up for the Palestinian people. We all must be standing up for innocent civilians, period. And we all must be taking care of our residents here in Minneapolis. What gets to me, as if passed, is this resolution is moving in on a very, an extremely complex issue, uh, and presenting it, at times, as a more simple, one-sided story. And what gets me is delving deep into details where we all lack expertise. This new alternative resolution accomplishes the primary goals. It calls for ceasefire. It calls for a two-state solution. It calls out antisemitism and Islamophobia, Islamophobia. It calls for return of hostages held by Hamas and prisoners unfairly held by Israel. But it doesn't tell a one-sided story. It doesn't include context and history of one community while ignoring the other. This is a hard thing for me to talk about, uh, because in addition to my official role as mayor, I also have a personal role as a Jew. You all have your vote, and you all can choose how to proceed. My ask is that you do so with both an eye for peace and also an eye for uniting our city.
Thank you, Mayor Frye. Thank you for sharing. Um, I also wanna, um, acknowledge that, uh, and I wanna try to be as consistent as possible. I don't want anyone ascribing motivations. I heard mention of, this is being brought forward to divide and to divide our city, and I don't think that's what anybody is trying to do on this, on this dais. We are just trying to deeply engage in one of the most challenging topics of our time right now. So, I really thank you for sharing. Um, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, uh, Chair Payne. Uh, thank you, Mayor Frye, for those deeply passionate, um, expressions. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano, for bringing forth this resolution. Um, I wanna state that I will be voting for this resolution. I believe that it is a fair and balanced, um, approach to calling for a ceasefire, which is my ultimate goal, is to support a ceasefire. And so, if this resolution does not pass, I will still be, um, supporting the underlying resolution that calls for a ceasefire. I believe this is a humanitarian crisis, and I believe that we must stand up on the side of justice. I really, really, um, wanna just acknowledge the pain and the suffering that those in the Jewish community, um, Israeli and Palestinian folks who have been slaughtered, um, in this most recent, um, war. But as has been stated, this conflict has been going on for a very long time. Um, and I think Councilmember Kosky stated that presidents, dignitaries, uh, ambassadors from countries all around the world have met endlessly to try and come to some conclusion, resolution, a two-state solution, some form of, um, willingness to live together, um, and to, to no avail. And consequently, I think that our expressions will not necessarily change that. It doesn't mean that we should not speak on this. And so, um, to my Jewish friends, you know, I think Councilmember Payne, Council President Payne indicated that tomorrow is, uh, Holocaust Remembrance Day, and we just acknowledge Black History Month, which, um, African-Americans in this country have been persecuted, oppressed, um, repressed. And, and it's not even in the past. It's continuing today, as we speak. Those same oppressions are happening to our brothers and sisters who are Jewish, who are Muslim, um, LGBTQIA+ disabled folks. Oppression is a part of our world. We must do everything we can to stamp that out. And so, um, these, these are very challenging times, and I just wanted to share my thoughts on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Council President Payne. Um, first, I would like to thank my colleagues who took the last two weeks to engage with their constituents and came to Tuesday's markup session in good faith, um, to engage in our legislative process. Transparency is important, and I appreciate those who follow that legislative process. Um, I'm just gonna get straight to the cut. I'm gonna be voting against, uh, the substitute motion today, and I wanna share why. Uh, Councilmember Palmasano shared that the basis for her language was a desire for unity. And this reminds me of a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, letter from Birmingham Jail, about "The white moderate who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension to a positive peace, which is the presence of injustice." Unity for the sake of unity is about comfort for the oppressor, not justice for the oppressed. And uniting around a resolution that is void of the atrocities that we are witnessing might feel easier for some of my colleagues on this dais today, but that unity would not be genuine, but would be morally bankrupt. The original resolution cited hard but truthful facts. Doctors Without Borders, Amnesty International, and the United Nations have been consistent in their pleas for a ceasefire and have documented why it is necessary. And no one on this dais is, is attempting to refute those facts. But I will acknowledge, it feels like some just don't want them to be mentioned. And I feel that is what the Councilmember Palmasano resolution reflects right now. Sanitizing the horrors of what's happening in Gaza and to Palestinians. And all of us on this council have been asked by hundreds of residents to take a strong stance on this issue, and I know that's hard. And more specifically, we've been asked to demand an end to the military aid to Israel, which now totals over $3 billion annually. And this resolution that we're being asked to consider seeks to erase the most clear and immediate action that the United States could take at this moment, and that is simply unacceptable. I know some of my colleagues like to take unanimous votes, but I would rather have a divided vote on the truth than a unanimous vote on language that erases the reality of genocide. And I don't mind taking a divided vote because I know that vote puts me on the right side of history. So, I will be supporting the original motion. I commend you for bringing this, um, even at 10 o'clock last night and this morning, and look forward to proceeding further.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember Chuck Tai. Uh, Vice President Chuck Tai, my apologies.
Oh, good, oh, good. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just start with saying, um, I think all of us can, uh, know this, um, no matter what identities we carry, uh, and the life experiences that bring us to this work. Um, but it's worth stating again, in this context, um, no community is a monolith. Um, and in every community, and in every marginalized community, there is a difference. There are many, as many opinions as there are people on any, uh, given issue. And I think it's, it's really important for us, as we are talking about this issue and its impact on, um, a number of different communities, whether it is, um, people who are Israeli, people who are Palestinian, people who are Muslim, people who are Jewish, people who are Arab, um, and, and, and beyond, um, that we do not group, um, anyone who belongs, every person who belongs to that community as one. Um, I think, I think, um, not every member was a, a part of the drafting of this language, so it would be perhaps helpful to hear, um, what that process was like. When I started looking at a, at, at language for a resolution, um, it, uh, it had been, um, it had been drafted or given, uh, given to, to me for consideration by members of the community. Uh, this was something that was not initiated by the council. Instead, it was initiated by members of our community, and that, that feels really important to note here. A coalition of eighteen organizations, uh, multi-faith, multi-generational, uh, multiracial, um, wrote this together, and every, every word that you see in front of you in the, in the main motion, um, was, was carefully considered by people who came from many different life experiences, um, belonged to multiple identities, um, including people who were Christian, people who were Muslim, people who were Jewish, um, and lived in different parts of our city, um, and, uh, people who, you know, had lived, um, in, in Palestine or, uh, or in the Arab world beyond that. Um, and, um, and, and so, that, that's how we got to this language. It went through extensive community review, and it was, um, to me, it feels like circumventing that, that public process that was laid out very clearly, circumventing, um, community review and feedback of language that, that we've been going through for several weeks. And, and to me, that's the, the primary reason it won't have, this, the substitute motion won't have my support today. But just wanted to name again what went into the drafting of this language, uh, and, um, and as a general reminder that we, we shouldn't be speaking about any community as a monolith. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Chuck Tai. Councilmember Ellison.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, and just again, wanna thank my colleagues for the discussion. I think it's one of the harder discussions where we're gonna have on this dais, uh, just because of how our identities are wrapped up in, in, uh, in this debate and in this, in this conversation. Um, you know, I am one of those councilmembers who, uh, really likes to reach for those unanimous votes, um, as, uh, and, and, and get uncomfortable when we can't take unanimous votes. Um, and I think for that reason, that's, that's one of the reasons why this substitute motion might appea, might be attractive to me, right? Um, you know, and, and, and I do believe that Councilmember Palmasano is in here acting in good faith. People have heard me, uh, and, um, and, uh, Councilmember Vitah do our whole Just the Two of Us duet up here many times. But the, uh, the process, the community process that went to drafting the resolution that is before us, not the substitute, um, as Councilmember Chuck Tai explained, uh, had a myriad of voices. It had a broad coalition of voices. Um, and, uh, and I know that there's no way to always include absolutely everyone, uh, but to the extent that that was possible, uh, that's what the, that was, uh, and, and councilmembers had to have hard conversations with community members who are touched by this directly about things that could not be said in the, uh, draft that's before us. Uh, and so, even as it appears to be so radical and so forward, um, it is a resolution that, uh, that is not without its compromises. And, um, the reason that the resolution before us, um, reads as lopsided is because this conflict is lopsided. This conflict is devastating, and the, uh, and, 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 uh, and absolutely, the attacks on October seventh were horrific and should be condemned. But it is not an excuse for a twenty-five to one death rate in a conflict like this. It's not an excuse for one-third of the people, uh, who are dead being children. And so, it is really hard because, as the mayor named, we, we've got, we've got legislative responsibilities here, but we also have personal responsibilities here, um, because of how we're touched by this issue, and I respect that. And I've, I do wish that there was a way for us to get here, uh, and unlike other, uh, you know, other policies, policy disagreements, um, you know, uh, when, the fact that we're, that it's hard to come together on this is, is, is difficult, uh, you know, I'm sure that I, the mayor has expressed the ways in which it feels personal to him, and I, I, I deeply empathize and hear that, because if this amendment, if this resolution faces a veto, it'll feel personal to me. And we'll, we are gonna have to sort through that and figure out how we maintain interface solidarity, how we move forward as a city. Together, we're gonna have to work through this. But we cannot ignore the realities on the ground. We cannot ignore what international bodies have, have, have declared, um, and have ruled on this issue. Uh, and, and so, you know, if this were a different time, a, a different context, uh, I think the substitute motion would be more than acceptable. But as it stands, uh, you know, it, it is, uh, it, it is, I think inadvertently, it's erasing something. And I can't, uh, you know, I can't be a part of that, that erasure. And so, um, uh, and so, I just wanted to, to name that. I wanted to thank the mayor for being here. I wanted to thank Councilmember Palmasano for the substitute motion. Uh, I wanted to thank all my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Wonsley, Councilmember Chowdhury for, uh, and, and, and Councilmember Chuck Tai for the work that's gone into this, for the, for the community members who were in those meetings that I was a part of, um, who both kind of understood the, the, the political realities of this discussion, um, and who were frustrated and felt like they shouldn't have to be burdened with the, with the things that councilmembers have to consider. Um, I respect you all for the ways you've engaged in this conversation. So, um, I wanted to just offer that and give an explanation for why I won't be supporting the substitute motion, when it is the type of thing, I think, in a different, a different context that I would support. So, thank you, and, uh, that's all.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ellison. I put myself in queue because I just wanted to, um, reflect on, my very first time holding the gavel was when we took this resolution up. And at that time, we had resolution language that was really community-driven and had a lot of passion in it. And we saw the pain that you experienced, Mayor Frye, at that press conference. And that was the Friday before the organizing meeting, before we ultimately, uh, took this item up formally in this body. And we really wanted to be responsive to that. And it wasn't okay that you didn't get a chance to review that language before there was a press conference. And so, one of the things that I worked really hard on with the rest of the authors was, how do we give that time and that space so that you have an opportunity to, to share with us and to connect with us? Because this is hurting so many people. Because this is hurting so many people, and that's why we referred it through the formal legislative process, so we weren't forcing our colleagues to take a vote on one of the most sensitive topics without a twenty-four hour advance, and that's why we outlined a very rigorous process around amendments, so that we all had time to hear from our community and you had time to hear from yours. And, and we tried very sincerely to be as inclusive as possible in that process, and I was really actually hoping to see an amendment such as this come out of that process, because I, like Councilmember Ellison, in my heart, want us to be a unanimous body when it comes to these matters. And I, I actually was a little bit disappointed, I was actually a little bit fearful too, because, you know, it would have created the conditions of us doing this volleying back and forth of, once you include this piece of context, you have to include that piece of context, and that would have been a really painful process, but I think it would have been an important process, and as Councilmember Jenkins is referring to, you know, we're celebrating Black History Month, and I know my story more, like, I'm not Jewish, I'm not, I'm not Muslim. I was raised Unitarian Universalist, so I was raised learning about multiple faiths through my upbringing, but it, it, it didn't directly and immediately impact me on a personal level, it impacted me as a representative of my community, as a representative of this body, and trying to hold all of these multiple truths at the same time. And that's why I, I really insisted on us going through a public process, because I think that all of those truths are valid, and all of that pain needs to be recognized. And that's, that, that's why we had the formal process that we had, bringing it through committee, and I think that it, and, and, you know, one of the, one of the points of contention that I've heard as a most consistent point of contention through this process is, why are you wasting your time on this? Why is this the first item you're taking up this year? Right? And for me, on a personal level, I don't see this as a waste of time. I don't see reflecting our community's voice and concerns as a waste of time, even when those concerns are outside of our jurisdiction. And as I continuously engaged with this work and looked at the role of city council in past international conflicts, we have a long tradition of speaking up, and oftentimes, that's happening under administrations that are not listening to local voices. We saw that with the war in Iraq, we saw that with escalations in tension in Iran, we saw that in Sudan, and most recently in Ukraine. And as I would be explaining to my constituents about that history, I had one of my constituents say, well, that, that Ukrainian resolution, that's a no-brainer, as she dismissed the importance of this to a number of our members. And I think that what's important is that this is also a no-brainer, depending on where you come from, and what your history is and what your connection to this conflict is. And so I think there's a lot of blind spots when you don't engage with your community, and going through a rigorous and public process is what enables us to tackle those blind spots that we may not have if we don't have the faith background or the ancestral background that's directly impacted by this. And so if we are taking an up or down vote on the substitute resolution, I can't support that, because what is required is a rigorous process that includes people, so that they can weigh in, because we would want to bring amendments to this resolution, and I don't think we want to do that on the dais here, that is committee work, and so we can refer this to committee and further consider it, and I would be welcome to that process, and I believe Councilmember Chavez invited folks, as the Chair of COW, to do that, but it would be a disservice to our community if we were to bring this forward today for a vote. Mayor Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President. When this resolution first came forward in the form of the press conference, I indeed did want additional input. The resolution that was presented, or at the very least existed at the time of the press conference, changed between the press conference and that which was presented and then amended on Tuesday. Now importantly, it wasn't amended to further the inclusion of other stories, it was amended in the opposite direction. That is my concern standing here today. I am not up here to assign motive, I do appreciate councilmembers that have listened to my concerns and heard from me. There are paragraphs within this resolution that reduce the existence of Israel to a number of terms. Those terms are not the full existence of the State of Israel, and the experiences that are noted in this resolution are not the experiences of the vast majority of Jews. I fully understand that these are, many times, the experiences of Palestinians. And so the goal of bringing something like this forward was, is not to divide, it is to unify. The goal of bringing this forward is to be more in line with the fifty-some other cities that have brought forward a ceasefire resolution in some form, this one goes well beyond that.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, President Payne. I, you know, I, I listened to you, and I'm, I'm bothered, I'm bothered, because you're the president of this body, and you had the opportunity to bring forward the words that you just said you wanted to see. Like, it didn't take for us to have Councilmember Palmasano bring something forward last night, yesterday, whenever she brought it forward, you could have done it. As the president, as the person who represents this city council, you could have, you should have? You just said, you've heard from everyone on all sides, you think there was a lot of community participation. If you did, you've heard what I heard, that a lot of people in this community is hurting. So I, my expectation is that the president of the council would have brought the language forward, not that he would be saying, bring the lang, I, I expected to see it, I definitely expected you to do it. You led the meeting, you, the first business meeting, you saw how out of control people were because of feelings, because of the initial language. You gotta do better, Mr. President. I know you saying, don't put, you know, don't single people out, but it's hard for me to sit here and not do it, when you say things like, you expected to see the language, don't expect, do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Vitale. I will just respond to that by saying, I spent a lot of time talking to other authors, I spent time talking to the mayor, trying to find that common ground, and we were not, we were not arriving at language that could be committed to through that process, and part of it is just, it's just very hard, and I think Councilmember Wansley kind of raised this, this is just a very hard topic to commit to strict language on, and as I said, in my conversations with my community, for every one amendment that I would want to bring, I would talk to another person, would that would want to bring a counter amendment to that, and it became this never-ending process. And so what we have before us right now is a substitute motion that hasn't had that type of diligence, that, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call her on. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne, so I really appreciate Councilwoman Palmasano bringing this version of the resolution, and I believe that in good faith you are trying to meet everyone at the table here for a unified approach on ceasefire, but I've also appreciated the principles of the original authors and the community engagement that they did from the beginning, and it's difficult for me to take a vote on something that was just placed in front of me, and so for that reason, I can't support it, but I really appreciate you coming to the table.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. Is there any other discussion? Not seen, oh, Councilmember Chowdhury.
I, I also do want to thank Councilmember Palmasano for bringing this language forward. I did indicate to her last night in my conversation with her that this, that I wish that she had gone through the legislative process and brought a substitute forward earlier, and as someone, as a person that took the time to refer this through committee, so we could have time after our organizational meeting to go to COW, to respect our legislative process and create space for collaboration, I'm, I'm disheartened that this wasn't brought forward sooner, and there were many times, moments where I sat in Palmasano's office, Councilmember Palmasano's office, and times with our mayor where we had conversations about the language, and there are asks for clear written language to help us figure out where, where we could go and what we could find, and there is clear written language now, but I wish there would have been clear written language sooner, so the spirit of collaboration could have happened. For me, it's really important to note that many Jewish community members have been a part of writing this current language, many Palestinian community members have been a part of writing this language, and there has been a lot of hands and time placed on this, a lot of faith leaders have looked at this, there have been rabbis in our community that people respect that have looked at this, there have been rabbis across the nation that have looked at this language and proved it, and I want to echo what Councilmember Ellison said about this resolution feeling one-sided or lopsided. The bare minimum of a ceasefire resolution that we can do is uplifting how disproportionate the attack on Palestinian civilians is, to the point of full-scale humanitarian crisis, to the point of where eighty percent of people who are dying of hunger in our world live in Palestine. I understand that sometimes it can feel really hard to see these hard truths, and sometimes uplifting a community that is facing a disproportionate amount of attack currently and losing life disproportionately can feel unequal, but that's, this is what equity is in this resolution. And I also reject the notion that this is, this resolution is being brought forward in this way to achieve some leftist ideal or some agenda, for me, that's not what it's about. I mentioned in my remarks at the Committee of the Whole, I am a product of people who have survived genocide, I am a product of people who were held prisoner during war, and in this moment in time, we are seeing a change in our world right now, and to the point where the International Court of Justice has to intervene, and that is not a small current event, and it is to the point where we have community members in Minneapolis who are saying that this is negatively impacting them on their day-to-day, Arab, Jewish, Palestinian alike. I have Palestinian residents who spend every day trying to figure out if they can get in contact with their loved ones in Gaza. I have Palestinian residents who have completely given up hope, they don't, a ceasefire doesn't matter to them at this point, because they don't think their family is going to make it out alive, they feel like it is too late. And I want to take time to just acknowledge that our US government, and I'll say, like, even me alike, I can condemn Hamas, I do, I can acknowledge the atrocities that have taken place among Israeli civilians and the weaponization of sexual violence, and how horrific that is, because it is. And I can say that our US government and our major institutions have consistently uplifted that, and have that, made that the position for our nation, and continue to do so, and continue to speak in that way through military aid, but what is missing is the plight of Palestinian people, the real plight of Palestinian people, and again, the disproportionate nature of this, and the disproportionate way in which we continue to erase the voices of Palestinian people through our major institutions. This is a way for us to uplift the way that, right now, we must speak for humanity, and it is outrageous that twenty-five thousand Palestinian civilians have died, and it is a hundred and ten days of this, and ten thousand of those civilians are children, and again, that is why this resolution may seem lopsided, because this is lopsided, and I'm hearing the, the good faith, I will say, the good faith intention around unifying and trying to take maybe a more neutral position, however, I do not think that this unifies our community. I do not think that this is, this is neutral, I think it erases a really important people and a really important experience that's happening here, and there have been officials within the Israeli government that have made statements calling for the erasure of Palestinian people, and that is well documented, and that is a matter of fact, and we, as US citizens who are putting taxpayer dollars towards the state, we have an obligation to hold a state, a sovereign state accountable in a way that we would do any. For me, these, I cannot support these, I cannot support this resolution today, one, because there hasn't been enough time for us to talk about a starting place and the amendments that we could do, and these changes, for me, are an example of how we dilute hard truths to make it tolerable, how we have comfort watching atrocities happen in Palestine and Israel from thousands of miles away, and wake up every morning in our houses that have not been reduced to rubble, with our children trapped inside, the fact that we have food to eat, and we're not receiving information from flyers falling from the sky. This should, that, that experience that we have, that should be the only dilution. This is, at the end of the day, for me, this looks like an ask for accountability that we are just sending over to our federal delegation, and I don't want the truth to be subsidized for appeasement.
Councilmember Chowdhury. Your time.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerks to call the roll on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Wansley.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Nay.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Abstained.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are four ayes, eight nays, and one abstention.
That motion fails, so we are left with the underlying motion on the table. Is there any discussion of the underlying motion? Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, Council President Payne, I just want to echo Council Vice President Chuck Tai words that she said so beautifully on Tuesday, that the defense of humanity is a shared project, it is also a hard project, and at our organizational meeting on January 8th, I spoke about the immense pressure to stay silent or to weaken our language when we stand up for Palestinian human rights, and I imagine that many of my colleagues have felt that pressure in the last few weeks. And on Tuesday, this body showed the courage to improve the resolution by citing crucial recent actions taken by the United Nations, the U, the International Court of Justice, all with the effort of attempting to stop the genocide we're witnessing. And the resolution as amended on Tuesday does not shy away from naming the reality in Gaza, or from having council do everything we can to stop it. Tuesday's resolution is something to be proud of, and as, in thinking of that, I would appreciate if my colleagues who co-authored this would welcome me on as a co-author. The majority of this body had the courage to do the right thing on Tuesday, in spite of that pressure, and I know we can continue to do so, we have an obligation to do so, by supporting this underlying motion, so I would be so happy if you all would let me be a co-author, and again, thank you to every single one of the co-authors. And again, thank you to every single one of the co-authors, the dozens of coalition partners that helped us get to this moment. Um, I know my future children, the, the, the future babies will look back on this moment and know that Minneapolis councilmembers got it right. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember Chowdhury.
I wanted to make an motion to amend the language, but I can wait until, uh, Councilmember Jenkins, uh, makes her comment.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, uh, well, Councilmember Chowdhury, if you're gonna make an amendment, then I would withhold my comments till I understand your amendment.
Okay.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Uh, the amendment that I would like to make is just an updating of the numbers, uh, as confirmed by the Associated Press from, um, I'm gonna read it for our clerks. Palestinians living in Gaza are being killed in an unprecedented rate. Over twenty-four thousand, it's to amend it to twenty-five thousand. Um, there is also a whereas earlier in the resolution that's, says, um, on October seventh, twenty-twenty-three, the unacceptable attacks on Israel by Hamas and other armed groups resulted in more than two hundred hostages. It is to make a change to two hundred fifty. And then it says being taken captive and the deaths of more than one thousand one hundred Israelis. It is to change it to one thousand two hundred Israelis.
Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury. And I know that you shared during our Committee of the Whole that you were gonna bring those most updated numbers for amendment. Um, so I accept those as technical amendments. Uh, is there any discussion on those amendments? Councilmember Jenkins.
Uh, thank you. I just want to comment because it has been stated that amendments somehow have to be done in some created process. And here we are bringing amendments forward. So I just want to acknowledge that in a body such as this or any governmental body, amendments at any time are appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. And as I acknowledged, Councilmember Chowdhury gave very clear notice during the Committee of the Whole about her intention to bring these updated numbers. I respected the reality that those numbers are still changing and they're changing by the minute. And so I recognize the logistics of not being able to have those number prepared twenty-four hours in advance. So, and she gave us prior notice that she would be doing that and I expected them. So, but your, your point is taken and I do want us to hold to a process around amendments. So, thank you. Councilmember Jenkins, are you back in queue?
I am, uh, cause I'm not disputing her right to bring an amendment. I'm asserting that anyone can bring an amendment at any time.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Jenkins. And I, and, and I agree. Anybody can bring any item to this body at any time. And we can hold ourselves accountable to a process and use our vote to maintain that process. So that is actu- absolutely correct. Seeing no others in queue for this amendment, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. President, just so I'm clear on this, you accepted the amendment orally. Um, do you want me to call the roll anyway on the amendment or are we ready to vote?
We can move it as, we can move the full resolution as amended and take that real call.
Right, so, um, on the original resolution as amended. Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Um, excuse me, I'm, I'm in queue to speak on the original amendment.
Sorry. Uh, Councilmember Jenkins.
I am in queue to ask the authors of this amendment, of this proposal or resolution to be named as a co-author on this resolution.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll ask the clerk to take a roll on the resolution as amended with the inclusion of Councilmember Jenkins and Councilmember Wonsley.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Oh.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Abstained.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes, three nays, and one abstention.
That carries and that completes the report of the Committee of the Whole and that report is adopted. Um, we will be moving on to our final report, which will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by the Committee's Chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items. Item number one is accepting a reimbursement for the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education for Training. Item number two is approving appointments to the Workforce Advisory Committee. Item number three is approving appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. I'll move approval of these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the Committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Cashman. Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville is absent. Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Uh, thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of, of all of our standing committees. Uh, next order of business is resolutions. And we have two honorary resolutions that were presented prior to the commencement of this meeting. Those are the honorary resolution that designates February as Black History Month and the honorary resolution recognizing January as Human Trafficking and Exploitation Month. Uh, colleagues, are there any further comments on those resolutions?
Yeah, we, we can certainly come back to that.
Councilmember Jenkins is in queue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, once again, thank, um, city staff and all of the community organizations that helped to, um, draft both of those resolutions as well as shout out MBN and my own staff person Diva Sadar, who worked tirelessly on the Black History Month Resolution as well as the Human Trafficking Resolution. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Um, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville is absent. Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries, uh, the next order of business is notice of introductions. And we have five notices to give today shown on the agenda. The first notice is from Councilmember Wonsley, who gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Article Three of the City Charter to add a new section on initiatives, uh, uh, referen- and referendum, which is to be submitted to the electorate at the twenty-twenty-four general election. The second notice is from Councilmember Chavez, Chugtai, and Chowdhury, who give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Housing Code to amend temporary housing provisions and to develop regulations regarding safe outdoor spaces. The third notice is also from Councilmembers Chugtai, Chavez, and Chowdhury, who give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Health and Sanitation Code by adding a new chapter, two thirty-seven, establishing provisions of a humane encampment response policy. Fourth, Councilmembers Chowdhury, Chavez, and Chugtai give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Housing Code to establish regular reporting requirements related to encampment removals delegated by any ordinances or other policies relating to homeless encampment removals. And finally, the fifth notice today is from Council Vice President Chugtai and Councilmembers Chowdhury and Cashman, who give notice of their intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend Title Two of the Code related to workplace regulations by adding a new Article Eight and creating a process to establish a re- a labor standards board to study and report on working conditions in specific industries. Are there any questions on any of those notices? Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just want to give a brief context for the notice, um, that I just made. So, uh, today I'm giving notice to introduce an ordinance that would give Minneapolis residents the power of referendum. It has been two years since the passing of question one, which moved Minneapolis into a strong mayor system. And in the first year of implementation, council, uh, largely focused on the executive side. And last year, we finally made investments into the legislative side of government. And while we've made strong, you know, strides to full implementation, I do want to note a key piece of the strong mayor system that has not been formally consid- uh, considered is referendum power. Uh, referendum is the process by which residents can collect signatures to put an ordinance on the ballot directly to voters. The cities that have been models for our own strong mayor system have referendum power, including St. Paul and Duluth. This is a critical power for residents to serve as a check and balance to City Hall here in Minneapolis, too. And the power of referendum will require amending the City Charter, which is a long process. Um, but introducing this ordinance is the first step. So I look forward to having many conversations with my colleagues and residents in the coming weeks about referendum power, um, as we move this process forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember Chavez.
Council President Payne, thank you. I wanted to bring attention to item number two, three, and four. Uh, myself, Council Vice President Chugtai, and Councilmember Chowdhury are giving notice of intent for a safe outdoor space ordinance uh, to allow for individualized outdoor sheltering options for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Item number three, which is a humane encampment response policy. Our goal here is to make sure that we are being held accountable as a city in changing our approach to our encampment response from an inhumane approach to a more public health approach. And number, item number four, which is an camel, encampment removal reporting ordinance, making sure that we, as a city, are reporting every time we evict an encampment and making sure that there is public reporting on how much it costs and if people were permanently housed or not. I did want to bring attention to these three ordinances that me and the authors are bringing forward because it's time that we as a city of Minneapolis restore the dignity of unhoused residents across the city of Minneapolis. Uh, as you all know, Captain Akasi is now in the Ninth Ward and the residents, uh, who are unhoused are my constituents. And they deserve basic human dignity and respect. And it's something that needs to be changed in our city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, and thank you for bringing that forward. This is extraordinarily important work. Councilmember Chowdhury.
I also wanted to comment on, um, the notice of introductions, uh, package to address unsheltered homelessness and homelessness in the city of Minneapolis. Um, we have been working really hard on this. Uh, this is a notice of introduction right now, but this, for me, has been a body of two years of work preceding years of work with unhoused residents, um, being a community member that has seen, um, people both li- that live in neighborhoods with encampments that are housed and people who are inside of encampments really, really struggle. And I'm excited for us to take action so we can change the city's current practice of sweeping encampments, lacking a standard, uh, operating procedure that's codified, um, having accountability and transform it to something where we are working towards reducing homelessness, where we are working towards a frame of cultural competency and working with our indigenous community, working with our Latino, Somali community, our black community, and those who are disproportionately impacted by unsheltered home- homelessness. Um, human dignity and the safety of our unh- unhoused residents must be at the center of our approach. And I'm super excited, um, to share that with my community and the rest of the city of Minneapolis and our colleagues as we forge ahead on these really important ordinances.
Thank you for that commentary, Councilmember Chowdhury. Uh, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair, um, Payne. I am, I just have a question about the ordinance introduction number one. Uh, the strong mayor system was a referendum. And so I'm, I'm just not clear. Maybe the city attorney can clarify. Do we not already have, um, referendum power or not? I just need to understand.
Uh, Council President, uh, Councilmember Jenkins, uh, we, we don't have refer- referendum power. There is one exception to that, um, with respect to, uh, rent control. The state legislature authorized us to have referendum, uh, authority with respect to that. That's unique and strange. I mean, it's complicated. But anyways, um, we don't generally have referendum power. And the, um, it was the Charter Commission, actually, that put the, um, the strong mayor, um, amendment on the ballot.
Thank you for that explanation.
One more thing, Clerk Carl reminded me, the charter can be, uh, uh, amended by petition. But the, the, what the ordinance that, um, Councilmember Wonsley is, is trying to put, uh, forward would actually be, uh, an amendment to the charter itself that would allow for voter-initiated ballot referendums, which is not an authority that we have currently. That clarification helps.
And thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um, seeing no further discussion, those notices are hereby given and no further action is required at this time. Uh, the finer, the final order for today's meeting is announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers? Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, President Payne. I want to just say thank you, um, Councilmember Jenkins, for bringing to our attention that some language that was used a couple of days ago in the meeting really hurt the disabled people in this community. And I'm very sorry for the words that I used. And I know words can hurt a lot. And so thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. I will try my best to never use those words in that way again. Sorry.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Vitah. Councilmember Cashman.
I just want to speak to, um, announce that there is an event on antisemitism tonight at Temple Israel, which is in the Seventh Ward. Um, there is an invitation, open invitation, but the temple is asking for folks to register in advance. So if you're interested in hearing from community members about how antisemitism is impacting our, our community right now and, and work together towards efforts to mitigate that, I will be there and some other colleagues will be there. So you can look online to sign up to register as well.
Thank you for that invite, Councilmember Cashman. And I, and I will be joining you tonight and I'm looking forward to that. Any other announcements? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Yeah, I, I also was someone that used that type of wordi- wordage that, uh, Councilmember Jenkins brought up. Um, and I see how it is ableist in nature. And it's really important to me to continue to learn and grow and be a member of this body that, um, reflects that as we're representing our community. Disability justice is super important to me and it's something that I want to work on this term. So Councilmember Jenkins, thank you so much for bringing that up and having grace for us. And I will do my best to do better.
Councilmember Cashman.
I, I also want to thank you for that and also acknowledge that I think we used some language today, um, about blind spots and about, um, language falling on deaf ears. I think we can learn from those examples as well, um, to use less ableist terms in the future.
Thank you for that reminder. Um, seeing no other announcements, with that, we've concluded all business to come before the City Council. Seeing no further, uh, to come before this meeting and without objection, I will declare this first regular meeting of the full City Council adjourned. Have a great, great weekend, everyone.